Welcome to the Tuesday, November 18th Borough Council Meeting. Hi, everyone. It's a full audience today, so every welcome, everyone. We had executive session beforehand, and Randy, you want to?
Excuse me. Good evening. Prior to meeting, we had an executive session. We discussed, primarily discussed, real estate matters, and Mr. Dewan had some administrative issues as well that we discussed.
Thank you, Randy. If everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Virginia, roll call.
Present.
Present. Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
First on the agenda is we have a presentation from the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority with the Executive Director Jeff Darwick. Welcome, Jeff.
The agenda for tonight's meeting states only Bucks County Redevelopment Authority Executive Director Jeff Darwick. The subject of his presentation is not listed. This is a violation of the Sunshine Act, which states the agenda must, quote, "provide as many specific, concrete details as possible," end quote. Just agenda violates that criteria. Therefore, the presentation must be postponed until the subject is provided on a subsequent agenda.
I disagree. It's a presentation, and if you look at the agenda, it talks later on what the agenda, what it's about. He'll explain it to you. 11D, I believe. Let me look. I think it's 11D.
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't say it?
Yes.
Yeah, motion. That's the wrong one, not 11D.
11D. Call for a motion to adopt the resertifying a certain area of the borough of Morrisville or redevelopment area.
I have the wrong, I have the wrong.
Certain area of the borough. It returns to nothing.
Okay, an 11D, it states, he's motion, call for motion to adopt resolution resertifying a certain area of the borough of Morrisville. As a, excuse me, let me finish. It's not, it is adequate, and we're just going to say, as a redevelopment pursuant to the Pennsylvania Urban Redevelopment Law, because we have, we have that area already certified, and it's a recertification, so everybody knows what area is that. Well, if you'll be quiet for a minute, he's going to explain that to you.
I should not have to not know, walking into this meeting, what that area is. I do not know.
Okay, well, he's, if you give him a chance to do his presentation, you'll know.
The public doesn't know.
The public will know, and it does know.
The public would want to know.
Okay, the public knows, because we have the same area. We're redev, it's the area that's been all these years.
What is that area?
Well, Mr. Darwick will go over that with you in a second. Go ahead. Proceed.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Make sure this is on. Okay. So, really appreciate the opportunity to come back before council again. It's always a pleasure to be in Morrisville Borough. For those of you who are not familiar with the Redevelopment Authority or who I am, to start off with an introduction about myself. My name is Jeff Darwick. I'm the Executive Director of the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority. I've been with the Redevelopment Authority for 19 years. I am a lifelong Bucks County resident, and I have what I would consider some deep ties to Morrisville Borough, having grown up in the area. My mother used to be a manager at Dunham's when that was a department store. I learned how to swim at the community pool. I volunteered when I was a kid to help build the Imagination Playground, worked at Burns Pharmacy, was a Morrisville Little Bulldog. So, I'm very familiar, and like I said, deeply tied to Morrisville Borough. So, again, appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'm going to try to be brief, and I got a big agenda, but I understand there's going to maybe be lots of questions about this, so I'll try to be very informative as well about what's before you tonight. So, again, just backing up to the Redevelopment Authority, we're an agency created under state law, the Pennsylvania Urban Redevelopment Law. That was passed back in 1945, and we were created in Bucks County in 1962. So, we cover all of Bucks County, and we assist municipalities, businesses, developers, nonprofits to facilitate redevelopment of vacant, blated, underutilized, and deteriorated properties or areas, again, throughout Bucks County. The reason we are here tonight, I'm putting my glasses, I'm getting older, is to review the redevelopment area conditions report that was prepared dated September 2025, and its findings, and to consider recertifying the Morrisville Borough redevelopment area. And that covers the same exact boundaries that were previously established back in the mid 2000s. And we're not talking about any new areas as part of this recertification. So, it's the same exact boundaries that was passed 20 years ago. And tonight, we're here to request council's review of that report, which I'll summarize, and then consideration as to whether the conditions that exist within the area warrant the recertification of the redevelopment area. And we typically do that via a resolution to incorporate into the report. And before we kind of get into that, I just want to briefly give a high-level overview of what's redevelopment areas are. They are areas in a community which may need improvement because of the existence of conditions which are defined in the Pennsylvania Urban Redevelopment Law, and these are the seven conditions: defective design and arrangement of buildings, faulty street or lot layouts, economically or socially undesirable land uses, unsafe, unsanitary, inadequate or overcrowded conditions of dwellings, inadequate planning, excessive land coverage of buildings, or lack of proper light, air, and open space. So, just a couple key points on redevelopment areas. So, the presence of one, any one of those criteria that I just mentioned may warrant the need to establish a redevelopment area in a community. And it's not necessary to demonstrate that all seven criteria exist, nor is it necessary to demonstrate that all properties in a redevelopment area need improvement. That's because comprehensive planning requires that redevelopment areas be considered in their entirety and not in several parts. And lastly, I just want to stress this, is that redevelopment areas are established and designated and certified by the Bucks County Planning Commission. In order to do that, we go through a specific process, and these are the basic steps for that process. Number one is a community identifies an area that may need improvement, and then examination or study that area, and a report of the conditions of that area is prepared. So, step one has basically been done. Step two is to present the findings and the report to the Planning Commission, and they would make a determination as to whether or not that area warrants being a certified redevelopment area. That was done at the October meeting of Morrisville Borough Council, and that resolution was approved and incorporated into the report, which was presented to the borough. So, we're on step three tonight, which is presenting the report to Borough Council, the governing body, for a similar determination and a resolution. And if that is approved, we will then take the report with the resolutions and submit that to the Bucks County Planning Commission and make a presentation to them for the official certification. So, this is the old boundary, the old map from the, of the boundary from the mid 2000s, and maybe a little cut off there, but I'll get to the same exact map in a second here. Just to touch real quick on the timeline, back in the early 2000s, but before my time at the Redevelopment Authority, I know there was, you know, an examination of Morrisville Borough areas, and in 2004, a report was issued recommending that the area that you see in red there be incorporated as a certified redevelopment area. After that, the Morrisville Redevelopment Area Plan was adopted. So, under the statute, it's not, you know, basically just not enough to designate an area. You need to have a plan, you know, to redevelop that area as well. So, that, this area was broken into different sections. The first plan was the Morrisville Redevelopment Area Plan. Again, that's just a very high-level plan under the statute as to what the town would envision to go there. In 2006, Morrisville adopted the Morrisville Town Center Redevelopment Area Plan, and that focused mainly on areas of the town center west of Pennsylvania Avenue. And in 2019, that plan was amended to incorporate some properties on the easterly side of Pennsylvania Avenue, primarily the Stockton Building. And, you know, just real quick, in 2019, kind of tied to the redevelopment area was the adoption of the Morrisville Borough Alerta Program. That included basically areas that were designated for business uses as part of the Alerta District, which follows the same criteria as the certified redevelopment areas. And in 2020, we were able to get the state's approval of redesignating the Bucks County Enterprise Zone, which Morrisville has been a part of since 20, or 1997. That actually exited this year, and we're hopeful to reapply for that and have the area designated again. Having this certified redevelopment area will help with that effort, as the enterprise zone is focused on manufacturing and industrial zone areas. However, with the 2020 designation, we were able to pick up areas of the town center, like the Stockton Building, and going north towards the river. So, to touch on the recertification of the redevelopment area report, this is the boundary map. Again, it's the same exact boundary that was certified back in the mid 2000s. And I'll just kind of go over the existing conditions of the area that we found. This is a table that was included in the report that summarizes the various photos and the conditions that those areas meet under the statute. And then I'll just go through if everybody's okay with a couple sample selections of some photos and try to wrap up with and answer any questions on that. So, photo number one, of course, is the Stockton Building. I would say checks every single box in the statute. This is on South Pennsylvania Ave, Bridge Street, I'm sorry, Bridge Street and Shelton Avenue. I knew it as the old A to Z Music Factory or Store, and it's a vacant property. Here, we have a corner lot with a vacant building on it, and then a vacant lot on fronting on Bridge Street, across the street from that. Kind of a, what we would call an underutilized property, building, if you will. And then going south on Delmore Street, you have maybe what might not be the highest and best use for property located on the river, self-storage facility. Plus, you have an active rail line that cuts across in ingress, egress, and Delmore Avenue as well. So, not ideal. Further on down that road, and everybody's familiar with these sites, but this is looking towards the Staley's property. This is the rail line, and it basically creates a very physical barrier to, I think, you know, access to the river. Go backwards here by accident. Here we have Pennsylvania Avenue. You have the, again, the rail line kind of physically separating the Borough parking lot, which would be on the left, and then on the right, you have some commercial development and an access road there as well. Here, you have a key gateway and a gentleman's club right as you get off of Route 1. Maybe not the most ideal establishment to have right at the entrance of your community. Here's just an example of some difficulties with access roads, lot lines. Also, you have the rail line in the background, and Jersey barriers to kind of break up and segregate everything there. Another vacant property, the former fire station. I know it's had, or appears to be vacant. I think it's had a couple owners over the past and maybe some other uses. Here's the municipal yard, and to the right would be the Morrisville Municipal Authority property. And of course, that will, has plans to be decommissioned. So, certainly important to start thinking about that. Another vacant lot, this would be next to the Dog Park. Here is the Cloverleaf site, which we're actively working on. It's probably one of our longest-running projects that we have at the Redevelopment Authority, which is finally underway. And of course, the Staley's plant, which really hasn't changed much other than they have demolished a lot of, a lot of structures on the property, but certainly not an ideal location to have industrial with only access points through a residential neighborhood, and of course, blocking off or cutting off your access to the Delaware River. And then lastly, here is the former bank building that's been vacant for several years. And, oop, let me go back there. So, just to, just to wrap up, it would, it would seem apparent that the area continues to meet the statutory requirements under the Pennsylvania Urban Redevelopment Law to continue to be a certified redevelopment area. I think, you know, a couple just points, recertification would really just be another tool in the toolbox for the borough to help revitalization, economic growth, and hopefully provide more public riverfront access. And again, just to hit on the next steps, we've already presented to the Planning Commission. We're here tonight to talk to council, and then if this is approved and supported by council, we will then present to the County Planning Commission for recertification. And then I'll just leave this up there as to some of the benefits of what Redevelopment Authority are. So, with that, I will wrap up and take any questions from council.
Just wanted for the public, so they understand, Williamson Park is not part of this, correct?
Correct. It was never certified by the Bucks County.
Correct. Okay, just wanted to make everybody understands that.
Thank you.
Counsel, does anyone have any questions?
Madam President, no questions, but just, again, to reclarify, this is to potentially help us bring some more economic development here into Morrisville, so we can keep moving forward. It should help.
It would be a good tool for that, yes.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation.
Also, I want to say to the public, we have agenda items, and one of these agenda items is 11D, which I'm going to move up so that we could vote on it now while Jeff is here. But we do have professionals come and speak about the agenda items, and that's what Jeff has done so graciously for us tonight. So, 11D. Scott, would you make the motion?
I call for a motion to adopt.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have to make a motion to move it up first. So, Scott, would you make that motion? Just, oh, you're going to move 11D up?
Motion.
You made the motion?
Yeah, I made a motion to move it up.
I'm going to second it. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. Scott, would you make the motion, call, read the motion?
11D, I call for a motion to adopt the resolution recertifying a certain area of the borough of Morrisville as a redevelopment area pursuant to the Pennsylvania Urban Redevelopment Law.
Luke, would you second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by council? Any public comment? You state your name.
Kathy Panzita, Hillcrest Avenue. I'm really happy to see this, because I'm really, as we all know, I served on Borough Council from the year 2001 to 2010. And as most people think, when you come onto a council, you get to do whatever you want, however you do. That was proper planning on our part. I was part of the ones that took a slumlord that you called the Cloverleaf property, and we got rid of them and we started it. I just hope that moving forward, as everybody works on this, that they work cooperatively. And God only knows. I really hope that, given the current state of our federal, state, and local budgets, and how we are sending money, that these things are still available. I'm really sorry to hear, and I don't know if it's true or not, because I wasn't on council, when maybe certain properties don't get deeded correctly and people drop the ball on those things. Or the truth is, it might be a rumor, or it might not be correct, on did it sit with redevelopment, how many came. I probably have every plan that came through on that Cloverleaf property, including where they could build or what they didn't build. That's sitting right in my house. So, I believe you work together. That is why you put the right people on planning. You don't appoint people to say yes or no. You work on it. You have meetings, sitting here, working cooperatively. And then maybe the public doesn't get misses and rumors. Thank you.
Anybody else? Say your name. Please say your name.
Mary Renda. I live on Crown Street. And I, from seeing what I've seen, I do agree with this. I think this is a good idea. I hope it helps. Nothing else is. I'm glad it doesn't include Williamson Park, as you all must know. But I want to tell you that the way it was worded in the agenda was a violation of the Sunshine Act. The Sunshine Act says that items in the agenda must give specific information and not say a portion of Morrisville Borough. A portion of Morrisville Borough could be anywhere. It doesn't, it doesn't give anybody any information, and it should be. Your agenda is supposed to be out 24 hours before the meeting, and it's supposed to be there to give people who have interested parties, including residents and local businesses, the information they need to decide whether they, you know, whether this is a good idea. If you don't give that information, people don't know. And it's basically an insult to the people of Morrisville to say, oh, we're just going to, you know, recertify some piece of Morrisville, could be anywhere, as redevelopment area. So, that's what I'm, what I mean to say, besides the fact that I, I didn't know, and, you know, and the reason for this whole thing was, I didn't know what you were talking about. And your agendas have to say what you are talking about. What? Where? Why? And not just some part of Morrisville. That was just, you know, it was just awful. It was a slap in the face and a violation of the law. And I do disagree with you. It was a violation of the law. So, this is all I have to say about it now.
Thank you. Anyone else? You state your name.
Jane Berger, West Maple Avenue. I too served on council during that same period that Ms. Panzita did. So, I support this, and this process was well thought out, and I encourage you to vote yes to, if you knew this. I'm just not sure on the length of the recertification. I think if you do that, it has like a 10-year, 20-years, right? So, it is a, a long time that you have to come forward with development plans that would be in the best interest of the borough, and hopefully as funding from other governmental levels would make grants available for this. So, this has a good timeline for the future development. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. I hope that makes you happy, Jeff. Thank you, Jeff. And for everyone, Jeff, you're going to make that presentation available to the borough? Okay. Okay, and, and then we will put that presentation on our website so that the public has access to it. Okay, thank you so much. We do have a community announcement from the Fire Department. So, are they here? And so, we have Chris Johansson, who is the Assistant Chief. Welcome, Assistant Chief.
Good evening. My name is Chris Johansson. I'm the Assistant Chief, joined with John Weiss III. He's the Fire Chief, Marshal Fire Company. Thank you for inviting us to speak to you on behalf of Fire Prevention Week this year. Although Fire Prevention Week should be observed all year, annually, NFPA observes Fire Prevention for a week-long focus to discuss, inform, and educate people on importance of fire safety. Being prepared for an emergency should not only be observed at work, but more importantly, should be always prepared at home. And that's where it should begin, is at home. This year's fire prevention was observed October 5th to the 11th, and the focus was charging to fire safety lithium batteries in your home. charging to fire safety lithium batteries in your home. This year, Marshall Fire Company visited over 500 students over four days during that week, ranging from preschool through 5th grade. We visited Holy Trinity, Grandview, the Intermediate School, the YMCA, the Montessori School, and several other daycare facilities throughout the borough, including Discovery Daycare, Our Daily Bread, and Presbyterian Church. Initially, we had a successful fire prevention open house on October 7th, where we had representatives from Marshall Police Department. We had Marshall Police Department, lost my spot here, Capital Health EMS, Capital Health Hospital showed up, they brought their neuro department. Falls Township Fire Marshal's Office was nice enough to bring their smoke trailer down. Bucks County Emergency Services with their marine dive unit, and the Bucks County Farm Horse's Office. So charging to fire safety lithium batteries in your home, how do you explain that to kids, ranging from ages three up to 10, for them to understand? We explain this to the kids, parents, and teachers. The message is very adult-like this year. How this topic is to be delivered, I didn't know. But as I delivered the message, it became easier. It's crazy to understand how observant, how well kids adapt to their environment. They know, kids know about batteries. We actually had more questions from the parents than the teachers about batteries. Lithium batteries, where do we find them? We find them in iPads, cell phones, power tools, just about everything that requires a battery, has a lithium ion battery in it. What's the danger to these types of fires? They cause, they're caused by thermal runaways, which is an uncontrollable chain reaction of self-heating that occurs when a battery is damaged, overcharged, or exposed to high heat. These types of fires are difficult to extinguish, as we have seen in the news with electric cars, and close at home in Bucks County with electric scooters and bikes. Word of advice, do not use power tools as a hammer. Do we cover, do we cover an iPad or a cellphone when we charge it? Do we put these on our beds? No. The batteries heat up when charging? Will that start a fire? The answer is, is let's not find out. Once your device or tool is fully charged, remove it from the charger. Use approved chargers. Use approved batteries. The chargers found at convenience stores and third-party batteries found on shopping sites might be cheap, but that's exactly what they are, is they are cheap. They are not UL-listed, they are not UL-approved. What could start a fire with these batteries? If you drop your phone. I don't know if your battery was damaged by dropping your phone. You puncture it, you crush it, something inside has broken. Improper charging, using wrong chargers, or overcharging. Overheating by exposing them to high temperatures just by leaving your cellphone in the sun.
I interrupt you for one second. If I could just ask the audience not to speak when we have a speaker up. Thank you very much.
There also might be a manufacturer defect. We don't know. How do you prevent it? Use certified products, UL-certified, right? They will be listed on, on an extension cord or on the packaging. Use a correct charger, avoid overcharging, and charge in a safe location. Handle with care, don't drop or abuse your device. Other key tips for fire safety. We emphasize this in the schools, the Fire Marshal's Office in town, they emphasize it when they go to public locations. It doesn't stop there. Have an evacuation plan at home. Again, this all starts at home. Sleep with your bedroom door closed. Cooking fires, the time, we're coming up to that time of the year, don't splash a fire with water, please, that will only spread the fire. If you have a fire in your oven, turn your oven off, keep the door closed, call the fire department. If your detectors are old, replace them, they're only good for about 10 years. Test your smoke detectors throughout the year. Smoke detector, they're supposed to be in all your bedrooms, every floor of your home. It takes 15 seconds to test your smoke detector. Working smoke detectors save lives. Should you have an emergency at home or at work, evacuate your home, call 911. Once you're out, stay out. Don't go back in until, until it's been determined to be safe. Again, thank you for letting the fire companies come here tonight and talk a little bit of fire safety.
Thanks for all those useful tips.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for what you guys do.
You know, do you, do you have that also as a, as a list that we could post on our website? Okay, thank you. We have one more community announcement, and that would be Victory Town PA Program, and Brad Fay is here to speak. This has to do with the National Washington Rochambeau Revolutionary Route.
Association.
Association.
It's a long name, and we abbreviate it with W3R, because there's three Rs in it. It's a national nonprofit that is engaged in promoting and educating people about the trail that was taken to Yorktown, Virginia in 1781 to win the American Revolution. Some of you may be watching the Ken Burns documentary that's on right now. The Yorktown Campaign will come a little later this week. But I'm here because Morrisville, Pennsylvania is a town on the trail, and therefore we call you a victory town. And I hope most of you have in front of you a little label that says Victory Town on it, it's a map, but also a thing that you can iron onto a shirt or something. Yes, there you go, that we wanted to give to you. I'm here tonight with my colleague, Amy Parker, who has been on our Board of Trustees for a couple of decades, and she's a Pennsylvania resident and on our Pennsylvania Committee. The main reason for my being here today is we're, first of all, wanting to thank you for joining with us as a victory town in honoring your town and telling the story to your residents of the March to Yorktown, and the role that your town played in it. And I'd also like to read to you a letter that our town, that our trail historian, Dr. Robert Sealy, has written, an address to your town, specifically to your mayor, just to tell the story, and this is, I think, something that will be worth putting on your website, and perhaps even framing and putting on the wall. It tells the story of the trail as it pertains to Morrisville. So I'd like to read that for you. It says, Dear Mayor Wallace, the surrender of Lord Cornwallis to George Washington and the Comte de Rochambeau at Yorktown on October 19th, 1781, rang in the end of the American War of Independence. In the summer and fall of that year, thousands of American-French forces had walked, ridden, and sailed almost 700 miles along the eastern seaboard. The hundreds of cities, towns, and hamlets they passed through, we call them victory towns, stretch from New England to Virginia. The Continental Army and its French allies marched from Newport to, through Providence, Rhode Island, Hartford, Connecticut, Trenton, New Jersey, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Baltimore, Maryland, in a march through Morrisville, earning the borough designation as a victory town. Hoping that the capture of New York City, hoping that the capture of New York City, the British power center at the time, the Washington, had concentrated Allied forces north of the city in 1781, but when a letter from French Admiral de Grasse brought news that he was sailing to the Chesapeake rather than New York City, Washington on August 14 decided to deploy to Virginia. As the vanguard of the Continental Army settled down at its campsite in Trenton around noon, 31 August 1781, with French forces under Rochambeau close behind, the most dangerous days of disengaging from the British forces under Sir Henry Clinton of New York were over. New Jersey had been crossed without British interference. Over the next four days, Continental Army units embarked on boats for the river journey to Delaware. Most of the army and all of the French crossed the river to Morrisville and marched on to Philadelphia. Crossing the Delaware from Trenton to Morrisville presented a huge logistical challenge. By the time the rear guard of the Continental Army arrived at Trenton on September 3, around 2,500 American officers and soldiers accompanied by maybe 500 horses and close to 300 oxen, and 425 French officers with possibly as many as 1,000 servants, 4,500 soldiers, 1,500 horses, 1,800 oxen, they were waiting to cross the river to Morrisville. Allied forces decided to use the ferry operated by Hugh Rankin to cross the river from the foot of Ferry Street to Philadelphia Street, which becomes Old 13 and Old Bristol Pike outside municipal boundaries, to ferry the men across, while the cattle and the wagons crossed the river using the ford a bit upstream. French artillery lieutenant, the Comte de Clermont-Croix, wrote, "We crossed the Delaware by ford and ferry. It is not very deep here. In the summer, the average depth is only two to three feet." As the United States prepares to recognize its 250th anniversary in 2026, the victory towns of the Washington Rochambeau Revolutionary Route have special reason to celebrate. During our founding era, they witnessed one of the great military maneuvers in American and world history, a march to victory that helped create an independent United States of America, the world's longest enduring democracy. Sincerely, Dr. Robert Sealy, trail historian. So I'm happy to leave that with you. I hope some of the names I mentioned sounded familiar to you, and it's a great history, and you're part of a great story, the founding of the United States. What's that? Yes.
Brad, and thank you so much for all your work, and that was amazing.
Thank you, and we look forward to working with you on a historic marker, signifying that you are a victory town, and we'll talk with whoever you designate to work out the details. Mr. Davis. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, and all that historical information.
Just a little background on that one, that one was for the GoFundMe that we helped out, and that gentleman who came here, one of the business owners, finished that GoFundMe out. So now we are officially on the map now, so this is super exciting for Morrisville, for our visitors, it's a great thing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, yeah, I just also want to reiterate that when this was first brought to our attention back in August of this year, Mr. Hawes from Clean Rivers came forward, and I know we were doing a GoFundMe, and we hadn't raised much money, but Mr. Hawes came forward and donated the dollars that we would need in order to get the plaque. So we most definitely thank him. On to Borough Council's second ward vacancy appointment. We have three letters of interest. They are from Diane Lanahan, Catherine Panzita, and Amy Yates Wolfling.
I'd like to nominate Diane Lanahan.
Okay, so we have a nomination from Diane. Do we vote now? No second? Do we now take a vote?
You can vote, or you can, you can, you can have any nomination, you can vote on each one, whatever you want to do.
As long as...
I asked for a second nomination, do we then vote again? Okay. Okay, so any other nominations?
I nominate Catherine Panzita.
Okay, any, anyone else? Okay, so we have Kathy Panzita, and we have Diane Lanahan, and according to our solicitor, I will, Virginia, call each councilperson, and councilperson, please mention the name that you would like as the second ward appointment.
It's for two years.
Diane Lanahan.
I guess I can't ask any questions right now of the two people, right?
Vote.
Vote. I really, I really like both of, the two of you. I know Kathy has a lot of experience, I know Diane is really good. I'm going to say Kathy right now, but she better, she wins, she better stay in line.
Okay, Diane Lanahan has been voted to complete Melissa Johnson's term. So it's a two-year term, and if the mayor is ready, Diane, are you ready? Are you here? You're here. Would you like to be?
Now, just for the interest of, for the interest of the public, let me just tell you what the requirements are. Before entering office, each councilmember, whether elected or appointed, must present a notarized affidavit of residency before he or she can take an affirmative affirmation of office. The oath can be administered by a judge, district magistrate, notary public, or the mayor. The councilmember must swear to support the Constitution of the United States, of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and to perform the duties of the office of councilmember with fidelity. A copy of this oath and notarized affidavit of residency must be filed with the Borough Secretary. Are you prepared to? Okay.
She said yes for the public. So the mayor is going to swear in Diane.
Have the affidavit for her to sign? You have it right there, okay.
And then she will come up and take Melissa's seat. Congratulations, Diane. Maybe.
I'm sure this is a congratulations, but...
I'm going to read it off, I am, and say your name. Okay.
I'm...
Diane Lanahan.
Being duly sworn accordingly to law.
Being duly sworn according to all.
Do hereby depose and state that...
Do hereby depose and state that...
Cancel that.
That's your affidavit that you're going to sign.
Oh, okay.
So we're going to start this over again.
All right. I know, you don't do this all.
So I...
I, Diane Lanahan.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties...
And that I will discharge the duties...
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Now you're in. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations, Diane. So you may take your seat, I'll have you sign.
So we now have eight voting members of council, as opposed to seven. So we now have eight voting members of council as opposed to seven.
Okay, so Diane, I think you're ready to vote on all these agenda items. So we have an engineer report. Jacob Riggs is here.
Hello, everyone. I've returned after two months. I'm going to keep my engineer report pretty short. I know you all have my engineer's report that I provide monthly report, so if there's any questions, I can take those. But I just want to mention a few items, a few projects. So first one being the Borough Police Sally Port. If you all saw, it's under construction out there right now. They will be pouring the concrete here in the next few days, week, next week, depending on weather. And tonight on your agenda, there is an item. There was some electrical, additional electrical that needs to be relocated in that area. So there is a proposal on the agenda for your consideration tonight to approve that to be relocated to keep the project moving along. There's also some a little extra in there for the security equipment. They needed some additional electric for that work as well. So that's all included in there, and that's on your agenda for tonight's consideration. My update for the Manor Park Senior Center Parking Lot Project, we are still on track and planning to put out the bid here before the end of the year. We did get some additional testing back through the RDA for the soils, which came back and confirmed that there's no contamination on this part of the property as it is on the Cloverleaf property. So we were all good there, and we shouldn't have to add anything additional related to The other project I wanted to briefly mention that's on your agenda tonight for consideration is the Patriots Park Parking Lot Improvement Project, the Phase One. So the Borough received that RACP grant for $500,000 for just construction. So we narrowed down the project scope. Instead of doing the entire park area, we chose to go with the parking lot right now and restore that, reconfigure it, expand it slightly, add some lighting, stuff like that. So that is on your agenda tonight to consider authorizing that to go out to bid again here in December. The other item I was going to mention is the 2026 Road Program. You authorized that last month to go out to bid, so we are working through that, and that'll be out here in the next week or so. We have to finalize a few more things with the bid documents, and then it'll be out to bid. And we would plan to bid that through the new year and award it in February, March of 2026. Also on your agenda tonight are several grant resolutions, all through the Department of Community and Economic Development Local Share Account Grant Program. So through that grant program, there are 11 applications on your agenda tonight. I just want to point out that of those 11, six of them are being recycled from last year. So since there was no awards announced for the 2024 application period, we are just recommending to put those through again so you're back in the race if they do not get selected. From what I've heard, potentially January is when they're going to be looking at that if they don't put an earlier special meeting together to make those awards. And then the other grant application on your agenda tonight is for a Keystone Grant for public library facilities. And that is, that grant does require 50% match. We've got, the Boroughs received it before in the past for the library to replace the roof, and at that time, we did match it with some CDBG funds. So we are planning and recommending that we apply for this project now. We can apply for the CDBG again in the spring when that opens up and try to match against if we are successful with the Keystone Grant. And that's for various renovations, flooring, interior renovations, exterior painting, stuff like that. So those are the main items I wanted to discuss tonight unless there's any specific questions from my engineer report, but.
Council, anyone have any questions?
Yes.
These traffic lights we're going to be replacing, how old are they? Do you know how long they've been around?
They're all varied by year. I know that they're all close. There's a couple that are over the 20-year, and there's a couple that are just at, I'd say like the 15-year mark. And when the 20-year comes up, that's when they're, end of their life cycle. So again, you have two or three of those, I believe, that are.
Are they some of the oldest traffic lights in Bucks County? You have no idea how much of my life I've wasted sitting at a red light when nothing's coming either way.
Potentially, yes, they are the oldest.
It's about time.
So, yeah, I know we've been, we've done, we have partial funding for Trenton in North Pennsylvania. We're going to start working on that project, and now we're planning, yeah, this is for the Trenton and Plaza signal. And now we're also including this year as a new one, the Trenton and Delmore Avenue Traffic Signal. That's the one that continues to get hit right at the Calhoun Street Bridge. The signal post is always being hit there in the corner. So we're going to reconfigure and relocate those so they don't get hit anymore. So.
And Patriots Park, Jacob, I know we're using the $500,000 RACME grant, but as other grants come, we'll do piecemeal.
Correct, yeah.
Upgrading that part.
Yeah, the one you have on tonight is for another $1 million. That estimate was close to $2 million, so with the 500, we'll do the parking lot, and then with another million, we can do hopefully more. And then if we need a little bit more, we'll try for another grant down the road.
Right, okay.
Piecemeal together for as long as we have it available.
It's all good.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
For Borough Manager Report?
Thank you. As a point of information, this week, my understanding is engineers from the Morrisville Municipal Authority will be looking at the water tank, the old water tank on Delmore Avenue, checking for the type of painting. We've asked them to attach the demolition to get us a bid for the demolition of that tank. So if you see some engineers walking around there, that's what they're up to. So the, in your packet was the proposed 2026 municipal budgets. The budgets call for an increase in the library tax of 0.5 mils. Proposed library tax in 2026 will be four mils. This increase in mileage will help address the year-end 2023 deficit of $69,000. The remainder of the proposed budget's call for an overall budget decrease of 10 and a half mils for 2026. This overall decrease of 10.5 mils represents a 21% real estate tax mileage decrease for the community. The proposed decrease is possible to implement in part due to the increase in investment earnings. In 2023, the general fund investment earnings under your prior full-time manager was $3,100. In 2024, under your interim part-time manager, the general fund interest earnings rose to It is anticipated that the general fund interest earnings in 2025 will surpass $220,000. I recommend that Borough Council adopt the proposed budgets at your meeting this evening. This will allow the public to review the proposed budgets. The budgets can then be adopted at your public meeting on December 16. I've appreciated working cooperatively with the majority of Borough Council, the mayor, and all staff during this past year. If anyone has any questions in terms of the budget, please send me an email, or I'll be happy to try and answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. And just for the public, Mr. Dillon worked really hard on this budget, and he did a great job this whole year trying to get us funds through grants instead of taxpayer dollars. And additionally, the 10-mil decrease is just a testament to his work. So thank you. Solicitor. Solicitor Report?
Wow, Jim, 10 and a half mils in one year. That's, even for you, that's impressive. Geez, I met Jim when I was a kid in Middletown Township. He was the manager. He was, he was a legend then, and Morrisville's lucky that the legend lives and is here. I will comment on various items as we come about. We've worked on a number of ordinances, the bamboo ordinance, can't hear me, the bamboo ordinance, the truck parking ordinance, the fireworks ordinance, and what have you. But I'd be remiss if I, I wanted to, I apologize to my two Marines up here, and I wish them Semper Five for the 250th anniversary of the Marine Corps, and I wish all the veterans a Happy Veterans Day, and I also want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving next week, which I consider one of the greatest of American holidays. So thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Police Chief Report?
Good evening, everyone. Very little to report this month. Looking back on last month, we had our drug takeback, which was a success. We had our trunk or treat, which was a little slower than last year, but it did work out and took a little while, but kids did show up and they had a good time. Thank you, Mayor, for helping us get that off the ground and making it a success. We got through Halloween. Seemed like it was busier this year than last year, and we had a little, a little bit unforeseen activity, but we got through it. And like the solicitor said, next week is Thanksgiving. It's one of the most heavily traveled holidays of the year, so I encourage everyone to drive safe, drink responsibly, and enjoy the holiday. The LSA grant, Jacob touched on those, just so everyone knows that after tonight, assuming the resolution is passed for the police car grant, that grant is ready to be submitted. I'll just get with Jacob. I don't know if you want to submit them all together, or if I should just submit that as soon as we're ready, which could be tomorrow. Whenever I'm ready, okay. So that'll be submitted tomorrow, assuming that the resolution is done. And Officer Morse, he should be going to the day shift side in about three weeks, December 8. So if anybody hasn't seen him yet, you'll start seeing him a little more when he's working out in the sunlight. And that's all I have for this month. Any questions?
So when Officer Morse is out, the motor carrier will be back in?
That is the plan, and that is the direction we're hoping to move to.
Just making sure. Anybody else have anything for the chief?
Madam President, Chief, I just want to commend you on your communication to the community, too, for that incident that did happen down at the vault. Thankfully, you know, the team that we have, the officers, the dedication they have to this town, there was no incident really there. We hung around, made sure the kids got home safely, and everything was comical and collective. So thank you for putting that out.
Absolutely. It was a chaos, but it, we were able to organize it and see it through safely.
Thank you.
Very awesome.
Nobody else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Are all the officers excited about the Sally Port?
A lot of them still don't believe it.
Well, the posts are up.
I'm wondering what that mess out of there is, but yeah, they were excited.
Oh, great, good. I know one of the officers said to me, he'll never see it in his lifetime, so I can't wait to say I told you so.
I forgot, I have, I had one question. How's that, the fingerprint machine working? Is that squared away?
Yeah, we're, as of today, I think we have a 28 process, which is a little over two months now. So it's working great. Everyone is coming to perfection with it, and all the bugs will work out.
Have we, real quick on that point, have we had any other municipalities come here to use it yet?
So I put the invite out until the town did come. I believe once or so, definitely once, maybe twice, but a ton of people are a little territorial. Yeah. Or agencies, I should say.
They'll come around, they'll come around.
Or maybe just a little sort of that, you know.
That's okay.
He did a good job, didn't he?
Yeah, it's very convenient. You're not doing anything for the public, like if, like if somebody wants to get certified for children, like to work with kids, you're not doing any fingerprinting for the public? Okay.
So that's a great question, and the question was if we're fingerprinting for the public. The answer is yes and no for that. In the past, if, say, a teacher would come in and they needed to be fingerprinted for their job, they would come in with their fingerprint card, and we would be able to print them as an applicant and use their card. I don't remember the actual form number of a civilian applicant card, but if you don't have that, we can't fingerprint you. The only cards that we have are state and federal cards. Actually, we only print the state cards, but it seems that more organizations in the public sector are utilizing, it's called, they change their names, but it's Identco or Idemia or MorfoTrack. It's all the same company, and it's a, it's a private organization that does fingerprinting and background checks for typically the private sector. So a lot of the hospitals, schools are, that are requiring their employees to get fingerprinted, pre-employment screening, where they used to come to us, now they have to go to MorfoTrack. Matter of fact, any applicants, police applicants that are not Act 120 certified as of July 1, we have to send them to Identco or MorfoTrack, whatever they're calling themselves these days. So if there's someone out there who comes to us and they have a fingerprint card, we can fingerprint them. But it's very rare now that that's happening because a lot of the companies, or a lot of these agencies are partnering with the company that does this now for their, their living.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Yeah, you did, you did. Yeah. And if anyone has any questions, they can always ask the chief. Okay, the consent agenda. There are quite a number of items here, so I will try and read through them very quickly. Approval of the bill is from 10:01 to 10:31 in the amount of $451,695.23. Approval of the Winterfest Parade Route using the same approved route as 2024 for Saturday, 12:06 at 9:00 a.m. Call for a motion to approve resolution to apply for a local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Patriots Park Improvement Project in the amount of $1 million. Call for a motion to approve resolution to apply for a local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Trenton Avenue and Plaza Boulevard Traffic Signal Replacement Project in the amount of $564,442. Call for a motion to approve resolution to apply for a local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Hillcrest Avenue Stormwater Improvements Project in the amount of $322,280. Call for a motion to approve resolution to apply for a local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the West Palmer Street Stormwater Improvement Project in the amount of $441,090. Call for a motion to approve resolution to apply for a local share grant LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Marsfield Fire Department Light Rescue High Water Vehicle in the amount of $400,000. Call for a motion to approve resolution to apply for a local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Marsfield Borough Police Department vehicles in the amount of $228,081. Call for a motion to approve resolution to apply for the local share grant LSA through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Truck Scale Relocation Project in the amount of $932,352. Call for a motion to approve resolution to apply for local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Marsfield Borough Public Works Facility Acquisition and Improvement Project in the amount of $1 million. Call for a motion to approve resolution to apply for a local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Street Sweeper Vehicle in the amount of $400,000. Call for a motion to approve resolution to apply for a local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Trenton Avenue and Delmore Avenue Traffic Signal Replacement Project in the amount of $459,972. Call for a motion to approve resolution to apply for the local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Marsfield Public Library Renovations in the amount of $225,000. Call for the motion to approve resolution to apply for a Keystone Grant for public library facilities through the PA Department of Education, and designating officials to execute documents for the Marsfield Public Library renovations in the amount of $112,500. execute documents for the Marshall Public Library Renovations in the amount of $112,500. Oh, I tried, I tried. Marie, would you make the motion?
Motion.
Dennis, would you second?
I second.
So, I know that was a quick reading on my behalf, but I just wanted to say that these grants, the total LSA grants is $5,973,217, and the renovations to the public library is $112,500. So the total grants that we're requesting as of November 18th is $6,85,717. So, that is all through the work of Mr. Dillon and basically Jacob Riggs, who's with Gilmore and Associates, and of course Kurt Schroeder. So between the engineers and Mr. Dillon, they have found these grants, and this is a huge sum of money for the borough. And if we can get this all, this borough will definitely be changing. So, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment? I give the floor to Debbie. Go ahead, please state your name.
Deborah Colgan, Hendrickson Avenue. Before any of you vote on this long list of grant applications totaling over $6 million, I hope that each of you have done your due diligence and have an understanding of what each grant entails. Remember, as you vote, that the LSA grant guidelines require that each grant application include a cohesive project scope and a definite timeframe for the project. Are you confident that all of these grants satisfy that requirement? Some of these have been discussed previously in public, some of these have partially been discussed, and some of these have not been discussed in public at all. And I hope that you have ensured that each of these applications represents a thoughtful and serious request that meets community needs, and is not just throwing a bunch of ideas because the grant deadline is about two weeks away. On the request for the Patriots Park, we have a million available through the RACP. I understand, and now you're asking for another million. I understand that parking lots are expensive, but we still really haven't had a really clear explanation as to why over $2 million is needed for a two and a half acre passive park in a quiet residential neighborhood. On the traffic signal replacement at Trenton and Plaza Boulevard, Plaza Boulevard is half Falls Township, Trenton Avenue is a state road. Has the borough reached out to both of those entities to determine if they will partner on the project, on the cost? On the Fire Department High Water Vehicle, is this a replacement vehicle for the boat that they have, or a new one? And when did the borough become aware that a new boat was needed? If we had emergency services meeting regularly, we would already know about how we can meet, better meet our first responders' needs. On the Truck Scale Relocation Project, the last we heard, there was a study being done to determine the inappropriate location. The results of that study have not been discussed in public. For buying and building a new public works facility, again, the last we heard, there was a study being done to consider location. Those results were not, have not been discussed in public. There are many questions surrounding the issue, and unless council has approved this project, and maybe behind closed doors, a grant request should not be pursued. For the traffic light replacement at Trenton and Delmore, both roads are state roads, and the signal is often controlled by the Bridge Commission. Has the borough reached out to those entities to determine if they will partner on the cost? And on the library renovations, I'm great to see that we are interested in maintaining our public buildings. It is disappointing, though, that this council won't hire the needed staff to run the library and won't appoint residents who have expressed interest in board appointments many, many, many months ago. And so why do we see action on the building and not on the actual library program that resides inside? Thank you.
Anyone else? Kathy Panzita?
Kathy Panzita, Hillcrest Avenue. First, I'd like to know, in relationship to Number I, you had a slip of the tongue, and you said at a former meeting, Washington Street. Is that where you're putting your scale? Number two, I'll address you, Scott. I have always said to people, you have the right to appoint anybody you want. I just want to tell everybody on camp, everybody in the audience and whatever. I don't know if you add interviews or whatever. You actually did me a favor by not appointing me up there tonight. I will address you, Scott, where you said, will I behave? No, I'll do what's right. I will file things.
Kathy, this is out of order.
No, it's not out of order. It's a relationship.
We're discussing the consent items, you have a...
And this is how it falls in place.
No.
So if you would listen to his comment directed to me, I have no problem on looking at this.
Kathy, I've known you for 40 years, I was kidding, okay?
Let's get to the point, because, you know, the love fest is over when it came over. You have an approval of the Winterfest Parade Route. I had put together a proposal. You have all received our emails. I'm assuming, since you have not responded to my thing to do your play at this time, does that mean we are withdrawing this? And I can go tell all the people that my team assembled that there is no Winterfest Parade Route. I don't know who your director is, I don't know where your fundee is. Scott did acknowledge all your emails. We set up a group. I'm gonna clear it up. Like I had said, I have no problem pulling the line. Everybody I said, said this is not going to be approved. So my question is, do I take it? My people, that we said stand by, they were all told, this is not going forward. We don't know about the insurance, you all got my emails. And at this point, I just tell everybody, I'm not running your parade, and you can do whatever you want at that point. That's my clarification. Thank you.
Anyone else?
The question's on the consent agenda. Repeatedly, the term local share account, LSA, were repeated. What is an LSA, please? I've never heard the term before, and it seems like, it seems to be fairly important to the borough right now. Are there any matching funds required for any of these grants? I didn't hear it addressed. Given the amount of money, I'm guessing maybe no. Given the state budget issues, I mean, we just got a state budget, I think last week. Is there a realistic expectation that all or any of the LSA grants will be funded? And of the list, I forget how many there are, 10, 15 grants proposed? Are these prioritized? Like, are there some that are more important to the borough than others, that we really want and would advocate strongly for? And maybe if we had to give up some, we would know which ones those are, too. Those are my questions. I'm not really expecting an answer, but I'm hoping for one.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Is it about the agenda items? Is this about the agenda? Do you know? Oh, okay, okay. So, anything from council on these items? I just want to make a comment on the Winterfest Parade. The Winterfest Parade is not a parade that was run by council. If there is a group of people that have decided to take it over, that's fantastic. The only thing that council has ever done in the past is approve the parade route. That is our only thing that we do, and then the chief of police works with the parade organizers in order to get the parade going. I don't know how all of a sudden this became a council problem, but it's not. It was always organized by individual group of people, and those groups of people are the ones that should be handling it. It was Donna Fernandez for a while, and then it was given to Audrey McNulty. So if the parade organizers have any questions, they should be contacting the people that ran the parade in the past. But we have, on this agenda, we are approving the date. If the parade organizers do not want to use it, then it won't be used, but I believe that the chief of police spoke with the parade organizers, and the police are ready to help, but that's all that the council is involved in. So on that note, does anyone else have any comments on council? Okay, so, motion and a second. We had public comment. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So motion passes, seven with one abstention.
The reason you're abstaining is because...
I have no knowledge of this.
Correct, correct. Okay.
And that's fine.
You're perfectly permitted to do that. You just have to state your reason.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, you're good.
I have no knowledge of any...
Thank you. That's a fair statement.
Okay, on to the action items. Andrew, would you read the first motion?
Call for motion to adopt the 2026 preliminary budget and authorizing advertising the preliminary budget is available at Borough Hall for public inspection.
Catherine, would you second?
I second it.
Motion and a second. Anything from council? Anything from the public?
I would also point out, this is a motion to advertise the budget. It has nothing to do with passing it, that's next month. The reason you have to advertise by law is so that the public, we have to approve a proposed budget, so that people then can look at it, make comments, emails, talk to the council, talk to the manager about making changes or modifications. I just want to point out for the public what this motion is about. Thank you.
Don Rice, Crown Street. My question, first question is, what is a preliminary budget? Emphasis on preliminary. You're not voting on the budget, you're voting on a preliminary budget? I'm not sure I understand the difference. How will this preliminary budget be discussed, evaluated, and edited by council? And finally, you mentioned that the budget is available at Borough Hall for public review. Will it be posted on your website? Those are the three comments I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I urge council to schedule public budget meetings. Many residents have expressed dismay over the lack of a transparent budget process. We're headed into late November, and we're just now seeing that a preliminary budget is developed, and you're going to vote to adopt a preliminary budget. I'd like to know, when did council receive this budget, and have you had time to review it? At public budget meetings, we'd hear an overview of what we spent the year before, where we are now, and suggested spending for the next year. Budget considerations should be more than just a wish list of projects. It's examining all the needs of the borough in totality, determining the funding required to function efficiently, and ensure that our spending enhances the quality of life for all residents in a balanced manner. Let's not forget that the reason why we have the ability to decrease millage and improve our finances is due to the earned income tax, not better management, and many of you up there opposed it. In January, five out of eight council members will be brand new. And let's set the stage now for a meaningful collaboration, so that we can be successful together as we work for the betterment of our borough. Let's start with budget meetings. Thank you.
Anyone else?
President, I would like to encourage just to have a public meeting. I think it, for me, before I even ran on council, I came to the budget meeting so I could understand the financial situation that the borough was in. I listened to the talking between the different council people and from our borough manager, and it was very, you know, you don't know what to ask if you don't completely understand the budget. And so it was very helpful. That's why we did it for many, many years. I would encourage us to find a night. I can give up the night for the Parks and Recreation Meeting, it's the fourth Tuesday, and for us to meet with the public and go over and be able to ask questions about our budgets. Only an hour and a half, and it would be, I think, really beneficial to our community. They've had a lot of concerns, and I think you'd be able to answer a lot of questions that would alleviate their concerns and maybe open their minds to different things. So I encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else from council?
Maybe, Randy, can you give your explanation again from the beginning? I know that's, is that...
I thought I explained it, but there's nothing to prohibit you having any kind of meetings you want to discuss it, whatever. That's perfectly permitted. The preliminary budget is the budget that the manager is presenting, it's being advertised so that the public can look at it, criticize it, compliment it, change it, lobby for changes, whatever, and then at a future council meeting in the month of December, can adopt it. So that's the reason why we're advertising it, because it gives the public the opportunity, and more that, they have an absolute right to look at the budget and see how their money, their tax money is being spent. So that's why we're doing it. It's required by law, and so we're following the law. As to other meetings, I'm not involved with that, but that's the minimum that's required.
Let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. Luke, would you read the next motion? Oh, and there's been a change in the dollar amount, that is not $9,229, that's $3,750. So if you can make that change as you read the motion.
We call for a motion to approve the PICO Green Grant for $3,750 with the matching funds of $3,750.
Catherine, would you make, would you second?
I have a second question.
We need to make a second first.
Okay, second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any council discussions?
Yes, I'd just like to, maybe you could explain what this PICO grant is. I've had a lot of people call me and ask me, and I couldn't answer them.
You got it.
Head mayor.
Thank you, I was gonna jump in, too. So, this grant here is, I'm working with a community member, community organization that helped actually do the tree planting back in September. We're looking to do another tree planting in the spring, when this grant will be awarded. We're not awarded yet, but hopefully we are. I did speak to PICO and had a great conversation with them. So the $3,750 is for the trees and everything that goes along with it, and there is a match, and the match has been secured already by private funding through Guardian Angels and some of their partners. So, thank you so much to Reverend VK for his commitment to Morrisville, to continue to make sure that we are making it beautiful for everyone to live here.
Thank you for that explanation. Does that answer your question, Catherine?
Yes. It doesn't, it answers my question, but I think it answers a lot of questions that people had before, so thank you, Gary.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. Catherine, would you read the next motion?
Call for motion to approve the application for payment, second final for the borough's 2025 road paving project in the amount of $64,555.27 to James D. Morrison. 2025 road paving project in the amount of $64,555.27 to James D. Morrison Incorporated as recommended by the borough engineer.
That's $64,551.27. Luke, would you second that motion? Motion and a second, discussion by council? Any public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. Andrew, would you read the next motion?
E, call for, call for motion to authorize EC Pierce Electrical Contractor to proceed with installation of the total, of the electrical weapons for the Borough Sallyport Project as identified in the proposal for total, for total cost, okay. Call for motion to authorize EC Pierce Electrical Contractor to proceed with installation of the electrical equipment for the Borough Sallyport Project as identified in their proposal for the total cost of $12,726 and no cents.
Scott, would you second? Any discussion from council? Anything from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. Dennis, read the next motion.
Call for motion to authorize the Patriots Park Phase One Improvements Project to be publicly bid to solicit construction costs to improve the parking lot. An RACP grant in the amount of $500,000 will be used to cover the cost of construction.
Scott, would you second? Any discussion from council? Any public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, Scott, make the motion.
My neighbor around the corner on Legion Avenue was watching. I call for a motion to advertise the bamboo ordinance.
Diane, would you make a second?
I absolutely would love to second that, in honor of my former neighbor.
Anything from council? Anything from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. Dennis, would you read the next motion?
Call for motion to advertise amendment to truck parking restrictions ordinance.
I'm gonna second that one. Anything with trucks. Anything from the council? Public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. Luke, would you read the next motion?
Aye, call for motion to advertise ordinance for regulation of fireworks.
Catherine, would you second? Anything from council? Anything from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. Marie, would you read the next motion?
J, call for motion to approve settlement stipulation with Penn USA Incorporated for tax assessment, appeal for property located at 7 South Pennsylvania Avenue. Capital T, capital M, capital P number, or hashtag 24-009-272.
Dennis, would you second it?
I second, well done, Marie.
Yeah, the solicitor has something to say?
Just for the public, you know, I don't know, 80% of the taxes that we pay go, go to the schools, you know, 75%, something like that, and a little bit goes, some goes to the county, a little 10, 15% goes here, whatever it is, whatever the exact number is, I haven't looked this year, but, so the school board takes the, the, the lead on this. This, this is something that they have agreed, and they want us to approve it. And the way it works is, instead of, this was a tax negotiated by the school board property, is 7 South Pennsylvania Avenue Quality Inn, next to the fireworks store. A decrease in assessment for the years 2022 to 2025. Instead of a refund, the taxpayers agreed to a credit against future years 26, 27, 28, that amount has not fully been calculated yet. I want the council and the public to be aware of that. But the school district wants us to approve this because it, that's, that's essentially the agreement, we don't know the exact, they're still calculating the exact amount, but that's, that's the deal that they negotiated. It's your, it's for your approval.
Anything from council?
Makes sense to me.
Anything from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. Non-agenda, so now we're up to public comment, Sam Davis.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sam Davis, and I'm the vice president of the Morrisville Historical Society at Summer See. I had an idea about, about three years ago, and it was right after the demolition of the school that was situated on Patriots Park. When I asked for a car show to be put on that, on that spot, I was denied because the ground wasn't settled yet, and I, I understood, it was fine. But recently, I asked for another car show to be placed on the same area. I went to Richborough, and I saw this tremendous car show that was put on by a person who had everything situated perfectly on the church parking lot. And so I went up to the lady whose husband was in charge, and I gave her my card, and I said to her, I said, you know, I'm interested in having a car show. She said, I'll give this card to my husband. Well, her husband called me, and we met at Summer See, and I showed him the area that I thought would be suitable for the car show, and he said, no, he said Patriots Park would be perfect. We could get around 150 cars on the, on that lot, on the grassy area. And I said, wow, that'd be great. He told me how much money that we would make from the car show. I said, wow, that's tremendous. So I, I got in touch with the, with the borough manager, and first he said no, and I said, well, I gave him an excuse, and then he said, well, how if it rains, and how if there's mud? Well, you know, all the people who own these cars are fanatics, they're really fussy about their cars. They're worth thousands of dollars. These cars are in perfect shape, they're from the 60s and all the way up to where we are, just about where we are now. And so I got in touch with him the other night, and I told him what the situation was. He said, well, you know, it's, that's the only spot that we put it, put the cars, to make them, you know, accessible to everyone. And I said, okay, well, I'll try it again. So right now, we're, it's still a no. And, you know, you, you all know, I think you all know me, I present, I portray General Washington, and I do everything in my power to raise money to keep the house going for another 250 years. Now, I don't know who's gonna come after us, but I'm trying to raise as much money as I can now to protect the house that was owned by two signers of the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution. There is no other house in our, in our beautiful United States that can state that wonderful experience that it's had. And it was also General Washington's headquarters.
I'm sorry, your time is up, your time is up, you have three minutes.
Okay, so I'm asking you to reconsider the putting a car show on that area, the grassy area of Patriots Park, and I.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's what I'm asking, and I, thank you very much.
Debbie Colgan?
Thank you.
Debbie Colgan is not here. Kathy Pansita? Kathy Pansita is not here.
One comment based on tonight, I'm glad to hear about the, the grants requested for the library and the support that's being shown. The other thing was, I had a suggestion, and I'm probably not following the right procedure here, but as I was walking on the Delaware Canal, I noticed that the only street crossing that I came across that had no crosswalk for the canal was Maple Avenue, and I would like to suggest that a crosswalk for the canal be considered for Maple Avenue. Thank you.
So just to address that, because John, John later is aware, and I thought they were gonna be done this past fall?
Yeah, that one wasn't on the list, but that's the way we put it, it's not what we want. Cross.
Okay, yeah, so the engineer will look at it. It's a great suggestion, yeah, thank you so much. No, no, we're on to the mayor's report.
All right, good evening, everyone, and thank you for bringing that up. That's something that we noticed when we did the mayor's walks, so thank you, John, appreciate it. Also, wanted to wish everyone next week a happy Thanksgiving, enjoy your time with your family and loved ones, and be safe, it is a heavy-traveled time, so please be responsible. Also, in this time, I know there's a lot going on in the world, and food prices continue to go up, so I'm asking everyone, Interfaith and the Methodist Church are looking for turkey donations to be able to give away to families in need next week, so if anybody would like to donate a turkey, I know sometimes Diane gives free ones out when you hit a certain point and you're not gonna be able to use it. Sorry, one moment.
We got turkeys.
We're good?
We're good.
Awesome, thank you so much. I know, so I'm also the chaplain of the Elks Lodge down the street, so we put that on our board yesterday, or on Monday at our meeting, so we're good there. Okay. Thank you, that's awesome news, I appreciate it. I know Holy Trinity was also looking for some as well. So reach out to your local food pantries, banks, whatever, however you can help, every little bit goes a long way. Also, with the Elks, they are having their Fall Festival Craft Fair this Sunday from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Elks is at 8:35 West Bridge Street in Morrisville. Technically, it is Fairless Hills, but they are trying to connect since they're right on our border with the Morrisville community, they have done a lot, they've participated in our National Night Out, and just putting the banner around Patriots Park for the fallen officer, so let's get out and support, you can buy some cool homemade crafts and support local businesses. And then also, last but not least, I just wanted to bring up, a resident had reached out to me about the street signs. I know we're going around changing them out to these beautiful new ones, so thank you. But I also then thought about an idea, like a lot of, you know, longtime residents and everything, what happens to the old ones? And can a resident request to have one if we are just getting rid of them? Or is it maybe something we can do like a raffle for, or something, I don't know what it may be, but just throwing it out there and seeing what we could do, because I know there's a lot of lifetime residents here in the borough, some new residents as well who take pride in this community and want to showcase it in their home, their garage, or whatever it may be, so. Yeah, so the replacement of the old street signs, some were requesting for the old ones.
So as, as far as I understand it, is we are scrapping it for dollars.
Gotcha, okay.
Selling them.
So can we kind of, do we know how much one would cost for a resident to purchase?
John later just shrugged his shoulders, he's not aware, we can come up with something if, if somebody does, it could definitely be a fundraiser for, for the borough, but we're not adverse to it as long as it's a fair market value.
Okay, awesome. So we'll at least start the discussion on that. Thank you, everyone, enjoy your evening.
John, you have homework tonight. Council member comments?
I have a comment. So, we're gonna have a new council, we have a couple of the new council members sitting in the audience tonight, and several of the public comments tonight were about working together, and I definitely want to work together. But I sensed, just from the general mood of the, a lot of the public comments, that there's hostility and anger and whatever. This is all good stuff, okay? We're not doing anything behind closed doors, somebody said we're doing stuff behind closed doors, we're not doing anything behind closed doors. There's an open door right there, Jacob Riggs is over there, he's at every meeting. If you think we're doing something shady, or the numbers don't match, whatever, ask Jacob, he'll explain it to you. Ask Mr. Dillon, he'll explain it to you. This, I know it's shocking that we're like getting good stuff done up here on this council. I know everybody's used to those traffic lights that are 100 years old, streets filled with potholes, and bank accounts that generate 1/10 of 1% of interest a month, that's, that's three things out of numerous things. I am so happy that all this is getting done, and I can't believe people aren't. There are people that are genuinely not happy with this. Unless I'm crazy, that's what I felt tonight, was the hostility towards all this good stuff. It's good! And we're not doing it behind closed doors, we're not doing anything illegal. If I tried to do anything illegal, Mr. Flagler would be, no. Everything's above board, out here in the public, and it's good. We're just trying to make the town better. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
I also, I had made some notes as well, because it's so disturbing, it's just so disturbing to hear closed doors, when we have professionals come here to the meeting every month and discuss things in advance, we've been talking about traffic signals at the Trenton Avenue for months upon months, if not years, right, Jacob? Like at the last meeting we had, I said, when are we gonna do this? I'm tired of talking about it. It's also discouraging to hear, you know, some commentary as if our borough manager and our engineer doesn't know, like, what traffic signals belong to whom and what municipality. The traffic signals belong to Morrisville, Morrisville is responsible for them. You may think it's in the falls, but it's Morrisville's responsibility. There is nothing that is happening that our borough manager isn't looking to ensure that someone else pays for it. We went to the Bridge Commission to see if the Bridge Commission would pay for some of the traffic lights, so it's just, these comments are out of line and, and really disheartening to me, especially hearing that you want to work with us next year. I congratulate those who won, I'm sorry for those that did not win, but seriously, these comments have to stop, because we, we do everything in the public, we invite comments in the public. But the public also has to understand, this is a business meeting, we're here to conduct business, we're here to pass ordinances, agendas, approve payments, approve projects. This isn't a Q&amp;A session, a Q&amp;A sessions belong outside of this meeting. So if you have questions, the borough manager is more than happy to answer them, but I, I just wish people would learn, especially those that won the election, what it is to be on council. So when you're here, I hope you understand what we're going through. So that's all I have to say, anybody else on council? Marie?
Yeah, I just want to say, I believe I mentioned something in September and it still holds, anyone that wants to do a suggestion box, or wants to have a town hall, I don't know where we would have it, it's open. Anyone in Morrisville is welcome to come and discuss what's on your mind, i.e. the budget, like, it's that important, and I, I said it several months ago, my, my tone here and my idea here still stands. I'm here for the people in every word, please remember that, and that's the only reason I have this position, the only reason, I'm all about volunteer work. If you want to know what we make a month, I'll tell you if I'm allowed, it's not a lot of money. I'm all about helping people as long as I can do it, so that's it.
It's full of record.
You could say go ahead. Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yeah, Dennis?
So, thank you, Helen, thank you, Marie, for saying that, and again, congratulations to the, to the new election winners, but I, I feel like I have to say this because it's happened at the last two council meetings, when we have presenters. to say this because it's happened at the last two council meetings, when we have presenters or people who are at the podium, whether it be public comment, whether it be a presentation, be respectful. To be, when you sit up here and we hear chatter, it's distracting. I know when Madam President made a comment, you know, it almost as if it was a giggle. We're all adults. You're gonna be up here, and you're gonna be doing what I've been doing. So I just hope you keep that in mind, and it is distracting for the people around you. So, chief, trunk or treat was my first experience. I had a great time. Even though I'm not gonna be on council, I think I'm gonna come back for every trunk or treat, and now that I think I've met our match in costumes, and I'll only, I'll only say Pennywise, and those of you who are there will know who I was talking about. It was a lot of fun. Kids had a great time. Halloween night, so we had talked at October's council meeting about glow sticks. I did go home that night, and I did purchase 1,000 glow sticks. With the help of the mayor, my partner, John, neighbors, friends, the kids were, every kid that came to the house left with candy and a glow stick, and they even grabbed more. So now that I have to raise the bar for next year, but having said that, so it was great. So thank you.
Thank you, Dennis, and thank you so much for taking the time and serving. Anybody else? Well, Diane, this was your first meeting. Having fun?
I am having a blast. This is so exciting. No, I would actually like to just say that over the last month, I had several people reach out to me who did not live in my ward and ask me to consider putting in a letter, and it wasn't anybody sitting up here. I did have somebody reach out that might be in my ward who's in this room, and I appreciate her confidence in me. Thank you, Jane. And I'm hoping that I can work with the people who are coming on to council, and we can keep this rolling forward.
Okay. Anybody else? No? All right. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.